All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Better, Tony.
The motion's carried, okay? The first three items have been adjourned, so this brings us to item number four. I would make a motion to approve the variance set forth in item number four. Applicant requesting a variance for a, oh, this is the wrong one, actually, for a rear yard setback of thirty feet, proposing in addition to a single-family residence to be located twelve feet from the rear, necessitating an area variance of eighteen feet. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, that's such a secluded house, I mean, there's really, nobody's gonna see it. You've got a lot of property up there.
Yeah, I don't think there's really...
Don't recommend anything.
It's kind of a unique setting for the house on the property. I don't see that it's gonna have any impact. So then I would make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced by the charact- in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Based upon the setting and the topography of the property and the layout of the house, I don't see that it'll have any impact. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon the setting of the house, I don't see there's any other way for him to obtain his desired result without a variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but in terms of the actual setting of the house, I don't believe it's a substantial variance. And again, I don't think it'll have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And although it's self-created in the sense that that's, he bought the property in that way and wants to make the addition, that's not any reason to preclude the granting of the requested variance. And so I would move those recommendations. Christine, you wanna make a motion?
Sure.
I already made a motion.
Okay.
So, well...
I'll second that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Where'd you go, Paul? Hello?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that number four passes. Okay, next is item number five. Anthony and Diana Cacciallo, 36 Carman Drive, requesting a six foot, six inch variance for a, for an in-ground pool. I would make a motion...
It's actually a six foot, six foot setback, setback, right? So the variance is for eight feet, six inches.
Eight feet, six, that's right, okay. So, well, actually, Christine, you wanna make that motion?
No, you go ahead, you started.
Okay. So I'll make, I'll make that motion to accept the variance. Is there a second?
What did you...
What's that?
I missed what you...
No, I make a motion to grant the variance.
And Paul asked if there was a second.
Right.
Second.
For which, which one are we on now, four or five?
Five, we did four.
Okay.
So there's a second, so, um... Here's what I think. The board granted a variance for a garage for the two-foot setback. This variance is for a pool, which is behind that garage and has, is farther away from the side yard than the garage is. Additionally, there's a six-foot fence there. You, you can't see the pool from the neighbor's yard based, because of the fence, and you really can't see the pool from the front due to the garage. So I, I don't see that there's any impact on the environment. There are a number of pools in the area, so I don't think that that's out of the character of the neighborhood. And without regard to whether it can be moved a few feet one way or the other, I, I don't see that as a bar to what the applicant is requesting. Since the balancing is supposed to, we're supposed to balance the, the wishes or the wishes of the applicant versus the impact on the environment. And I, I see that, my opinion is, based upon the house as it exists now, with the garage that's already been granted, that, that there's little impact on the environment. And I don't see any good reason to deny the variance. Anybody have any comments on that?
I agree.
Okay. Anybody have any strong disagreement with me?
I do.
Okay.
They were voiced during our public discussion.
So Paul, do you wanna make some findings and then the board can deliberate further on the motion?
Okay. So, the applicant made his own findings, however, I, I think I'd like to just amend those a little bit. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. Based upon the existing garage variance which was granted and the, now the fence that's there along the property line, I don't see that it has any detrimental effect on any neighboring properties. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon his testimony, I, I think that some variance would be required at least some amount. And so I don't think there's any way for him to do it without a variance based upon his testimony and our site visits. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is substantial mathematically, but in, compared to the variance that was granted for the garage, I, I think that minimizes any impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, I, I think we all recognize, based upon the testimony and our visits and a review of parcel access, that there are a number of pools in the area and it's not outside the character of the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, the lot is, I think, substandard. And so therefore, probably anything that would be done would require an area variance, although it's self-created in the sense that he wants to have a pool, but again, that's not any basis to deny the variance. So I make those findings. Any, any discussion or impact or anything you wanna add to those or take away from that? Change?
Is it, is it, is anybody, I, I just still have the question of how close that pool is going to be to their neighbor's leach field. I mean, they're, I hate to bring that up again, but I, that, that's just my question. That's, that's, that's my only question.
Okay.
The applicant, I mean, even if the neighbor's leach field were on the edge of its property, the applicant's variance gets considered only as to the applicant's property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My, my concern about this is everything you're saying, Paul, sounds very legitimate. Assuming that everything that was presented to us the first time was very legitimate. We founded for this variance, and I did not vote for it the first time, based on the fact that certain assumptions which Arthur and I brought up earlier were so, that the footprint could not be moved back further. Now we're talking, it, there's just seems to be a tremendous amount of gray area for me here. I don't feel that everything is being presented quite as it should be. And right now, I, I, I don't see that moving forward with this is gonna be in the best interest of the town because of the way it was initially presented and put through based on what's happened subsequent, meaning what's before us today.
Okay.
Right now, I'm not in favor of the granting this variance for those reasons.
All right.
Chairman, I agree, I agree with Tony. You know, there's nothing to scale. There's nothing that's really drawn, like we normally ask for, we've asked for in the past on many occasions. I can't vote for this application.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, am I hearing you to say that based upon some, for lack of a better word, inaccuracies or misrepresentations on his previous request for his variance for the garage, that that's having a bearing in, in terms of adding to the questioning the veracity of his presentation for, for this application?
I'm saying that there's not enough detail to the drawings that were supplied to make a logical decision on this application.
Yeah, I agree that the diagram is not accurate, but you, you saw, I mean, the, the garage is closer to the side yard, side lot line than the pool will be. So I, I can't see how the pool would have a greater impact than the garage would have.
Again, I'm, I'm going back to the arguments the first time around. Why the, why the, and again, that variance has been granted, that's history.
Well, it is history. I voted against it also because I, I thought it was too substantial.
We, we were wondering why the whole thing couldn't push back. It was because of the same reason that he's saying today, that where he wants to put a pool. I, I just, I'm not buying into it, I'm sorry. And it's just, I'm, I'm just not going to be in favor of granting this variance for those reasons. I have questions as to the veracity of the entire application going back a year ago.
But my concern as the attorney is, how do, how is that related to the consideration that's before you tonight, which is the benefit to the applicant of the pool versus the detriment to the community? And which of the five factors...
My, my opinion, Lisa, my opinion, okay? And, and if that's not good enough for the board, then so be it. But I am not gonna be voting in favor of this, granting this variance.
I don't think we have enough, again, I don't think we have enough accurate detail to make a logical vote. You know, it says six foot, six inches. There's no scale, we got nothing to scale to. You know, there's nothing, nothing, nothing makes sense. So again, I can't, in, in good faith, good conscience, I can't vote for it.
Okay.
I think it's inaccurate and I think we deserve more information that it is accurate. We've asked other applicants the same thing and they've complied.
Christine, I forget, did you have any input?
No, just what I had said, but Lisa clarified that for me. I mean, frankly, I didn't, I, your findings make sense to me and I'm, I'm trying to focus on that.
Okay, thank you.
On other...
And Phyllis?
Phyllis is recused on this application, Mr. Ferriss.
Oh, that's right.
I think you can call the question. I think a roll call vote is in order.
Okay. Then, all those in favor?
Can you do it by roll call, please, for the record?
I will, as soon as I find...
I'm sorry.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay. Art?
No.
I vote yes. Tony?
No.
Larry?
Yes.
And Phyllis is recused, so I have it as three ayes and two nays.
That's what it is.
Okay, next application.
Number six. Ben and Stephanie Galati, eight Twin Hills, Twin Hills Road, for a pool located in the front yard. And a fence exceeding three and a half feet. Christine, you wanna make a motion?
Yes, okay. Do we have findings?
Um, well, here's...
Oh, the applic-... The application looks like the findings, what do you think?
Well, here's what I... Here's what I would be more comfortable with. I think if you move the fence back thirty feet from the lot, from the, what is the, front yard line, then I would not have any objection to the pool in the, in what is considered the front yard. But based on the site visit, I, I think it's too close to the roadway. I, I appreciate that the applicant doesn't wanna use up their, what they consider their rear yard and side yard. But I, I think it's, I think it's too close to the roadway. And so I, I think that if they move the fence back thirty feet from the front line, they would not even need a variance for the fence. And then I would not have any objection to the pool in the remaining front yard. But that's just my opinion. Lisa, we agree that that, that was a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Okay. So Christine, what do you think about that?
Well...
So what I would, I would suggest if we denied the, the variance, we denied the, denied the fence variance, the applicant could put the fence at, at thirty feet from the front yard line, side, front side, the front lot line. And so we would only be, we, and if we granted the pool in the front yard behind that, we could fashion it that way, right, Lisa?
So if I'm hearing correctly, what you're saying is that you would consider a variance to allow the pool to be within the front yard conditioned upon the fence surrounding the pool being no closer to that front lot line than, or front step back than thirty feet?
That, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
Okay. And that will still enable them to have their pool in that side area and not directly in their backyard, right?
It looks like there's about, there's more than fifty-some feet from the street to the house. So that still leaves like twenty-some feet between the fence and the house, if these, if these measurements are accurate.
All right. I, I, I thought that, okay. Can I, can I just say something here? I, I thought that the variance, that the issue really was that it was, the fence was gonna be so close to the neighbor's yard where that, all those trees were, and they didn't have a problem with it. And, and that although the six-foot fence is in the, the front yard, it still stepped quite a bit back, certainly much farther than the house across the street, as was pointed out. So I'm just trying to figure out how much more we're at, we would be asking them to move that six-foot fence back. I'm just trying to picture it, I'm looking at the...
So Christine, are you saying you would be comfortable with the applicant granting it as proposed, without the condition?
I would.
I agree. We've allowed six-foot fences in the front yard on many occasions.
I'm comfortable with the proposal as it stands.
And if they, and if, if we, if we stipulate that, that plantings be made in front of the, the fence, I think that would be even better.
Planted and maintained.
Right.
I'm good with that.
All right, then I'll, I'll come up with some findings. Larry, we all right?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, based upon the fact that this is a corner lot, it creates two front yards, and it does not appear that based upon the other nearby properties, it'll have any impact. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based again upon the corner lot, almost any placement, placement of the pool would require variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is because pools are not allowed in the front yard and this is allowing a pool in the front yard. However, based upon the foregoing, it's, it's not substantial in that regard. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There are other pools and are, there are other fences in the front yard. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it certainly is in the sense that the applicant wants to have a pool in the front yard, but that's not any reason for denying the application. So do you wanna make a motion, Christine?
Yes, I will. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
And Christine, did you wanna add your condition?
Yes, thank you. And conditioned with plantings be made in, in front of the fence and maintained.
Second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 And for the record, we have Phyllis abstaining.
All right, opposed, nay, and one recusal. So I have it as four, one, one. And the motion passes. Next is number seven. Jose Rodriguez, 63 Lynn Berkeley, requesting a pool and a fence, a two-foot variant, I'm sorry, a... A thirteen-foot variance for a pool and a relief for a existing fence within the front yard. Who's next? Art? Wanna make a motion?
I'm sorry, I was sleeping. Mr. Rodriguez, okay, again, we were out there, obviously. Not a whole lot of yard, no other place to put this pool that I can figure out, so I'm good with it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Is there a second?
Aye. Second.
Okay. Then I'll make these findings, whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of area variance. It does not appear to be based upon the neighbor properties which are similar in nature, that have any real effect, whether the benefit can be sought by the applicant by some method feasible other than an area variance based upon the size of the lot and the way it's described. You would need an area variance for almost any placement in the back, in that yard. And the fence is existing. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is substantial in the sense that it's a thirteen-foot variance for the pool. However, based upon the size of the lot, it's de minimis. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, it's consistent with neighborhood properties. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it certainly is in the sense that he wants to put the pool there and he bought the fence, he bought the property with the fence that way, but that is no reason to deny the variance. And those are my findings. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so all in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so that passes. Six, zero. Next is number eight. Nineteen Alex Way. This is a variance request for a pool in a required front yard and a shed. Again, in the front yard. Tony, do you mind making this motion?
Sure. Do you want me to go through all the different findings?
Yeah, how do you like it?
Oh, okay, hold on a second.
Put the ice cream down, Tony.
What's that?
Put the ice cream down.
No, no, the ice cream's already gone. Okay. My, my biggest deal is making sure the, the specs work completely. Okay. One second. Okay. Whether an undesirable effect will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or an undesirable or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by granting this area variance. It's not founded that this will happen. Properties located at the end of a cul-de-sac or much privacy all around, this will not impact the neighborhood at all. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the, for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, no, because of the topography of the property and site, it's probably the most feasible place for the location of the, the pool and the shed. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, yes, it's substantial in the sense of, we listed, towards being in the front of the property and towards property lines, but it's not substantial given in the topography and the location of the neighborhood. Whether the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, no, will not, based on basically what I just said prior. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration should we, well, yes, it's self-created in the sense that this is the only place that the applicant can locate the, the structure, the pool, the shed because of the topography. And those are my findings.
Okay. So, did you make a motion?
Shall I make the motion or somebody else?
You don't, you're not wrong.
I make a motion that the board approve the area variance request. Decision is based on the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, and the testimony offered in the public hearing and results by the site visits of the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by me. No amendments.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that carries.
Thank you.
And finally, it brings us to item number nine. Forty-four La Grange Avenue, there are a number of variances. One is for fourteen variants, fourteen-foot variance for rear lot line. Another variance is for ten percent increase in coverage. The next is, oh, it looks like a twenty-four-foot variance for refuse containers. And finally, waiving the requirement for open space and parking pursuant to the code. So...
You do have staff report?
There is a staff report and this is an unlisted action. I'm told that...
There's a NECDAC in your package as well.
Okay. So we're ready, we can...
You can, first you would have to make a decision on the NECDAC, which is recommended in the report, and then, then you can vote on the variances. into the board, and then you can vote on the variances.
Do we have to do it secret, or just say we accepted negative declaration of the plan?
You could just say that you accept the negative declaration, right, Lisa, I mean, there's nothing else.
Right, so the board, we circulated the draft neg deck to the board earlier. Hopefully you had a chance to review it, but consistent with what the planning board found in April, staff does not find that this will create an adverse impact and recommends that the board adopt a negative declaration.
So I'll make a motion to adopt a negative declaration on this project.
Second that.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? That carries. And then I'll make a motion just to accept the variances in item number nine, based
Looking for a second?
Well. Well, based upon the testimony in the public hearing, site visits, and accepting the recommendations of staff, I move to accept the variances set forth in item number nine.
Second that.
Second that, okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? So that carries 6-0. Do any of the applicants have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you very much.
That's not a question.
But it's close. I just want to say thank you very much for all the support. If anybody's out there listening, I'd like to thank Philomena for coming in and saying those great words of support. Thank you so much. I'd like to thank John, and I'd like to thank the whole board. That's all.
Good luck. Build it.
Thank you. We're going to try. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to conclude.
I make that motion that we end the meeting.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Hopefully we'll see you in person next month.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Take care, Paul.